Council. Tuesday, August twenty second. Please, roll call, please.
Councilmember Costas Jr.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rollis.
President.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lozaldi.
Yeah.
Mayor Julian.
Yeah. You will please stand in the president's meeting. I mean, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is moment of thanks, appreciation or condolences. If anybody would like to share any of those. If not, I do. One is the condolences to the family, to families residents of West Maui and Lahaina for their losses. It's a kind of comprehend the magnitude of the suffering that and the needs of really that they have. You know, there's still what eight hundred and something missing people, one hundred and fifteen who turned dead. So prayers to them. Second item is appreciation to law enforcement for tracking down the killer. As some of us have seen in San Diego, law enforcement authorities, thank city of well with the list department for their efforts and and making getting this to the end and for continued efforts that we are in the public opinion period helping the family with. And also, thanks to the volunteers who painted the road here. That it looks really good. I know, I know that they're looking for other resources for, you know, finish the, you know, the redo until we really do it. So that's what I had. So item four, agenda review. Anybody on the city council, we change the review order.
Yeah.
For the business. Good, good. All right. Item five, community participation. I have, if there's anything that anybody would like to discuss that's not on the agenda, please fill out a paperwork like Mr. Alvarez did. Mr. George Alvarez.
That was out there Saturday during the meeting and the nice that they did. He's only compared for that this following day, they had something on the internet asking for donations, whatnot, and he specifically stated none of the money used for that that project was from the grant that they're receiving, which in a sense bothered me because if these guys are willing to assist and beautify the city, shouldn't the city have set aside money to help these guys out? You're not paying labor. They're doing something to want to beautify the city. We're not that poor. So that really got me upset, all right, from that perspective. I've talked to administrator over that. We clarified the exact some of the things that we needed to discuss, and I appreciate Todd's openness and dealing with that issue on that one. The issue with the person who got caught in Tijuana. We had good news. The only problem I had is what did we do as a city before it was announced that one of our departments is assisting in financial assistance for these kids? I worked social service many years, Catholic Charities, homeless coordinator. And where is the other agencies in coordination with the effort of helping these two children that really got messed up? No father, mom's gone. Now the financial burden is going to be on all of them the way it should be. Let it be Catholic Charities, or at the cross, City of San, but here, whatever to get together and have a full fledged assault. I'm getting these kids back on. So that's going to be on you guys finding out exactly what's going to be doing in the long run. We can't sugarcoat tragedy, tragedy in a sense where at least kids might be questioning when is going to come. I'm just being out there, being honest from that perspective. And nothing's been done with that unit over there that's smart. Here, let me county. Has anyone got hold of county, find out what's going on there? Is it a registered vehicle? Who's responsible? We can't. Don't have the law enforcement. Oh, yeah. And my best bet, Pete, is a lack of any form of law enforcement in this frickin' town. Everyone's running wild, making U-turns. Even the traffic guys who are working on the road are parking in the rim of history where people had to go around because he couldn't see the visibility of getting on Main Street here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. There's a lot going on regarding the family. So I want to item six consent calendar. Well, I have to present for the council approval without discussion. Anybody wish to pull an item?
No.
I have, but I personally would like to pull item E. Three, so kind of on how to, I'm see, and also Mr. Alvarez wants to pull for for the common public safety item E one. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent count?
A motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
All second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item E one, Mr. Alvarez. Six easy.
Or we have lack of law enforcement in this community. It's hard to have maybe three at a time, two at a time. We're lucky, and I keep on emphasizing this, that we don't have the crime higher than we have here. Okay? Most cities have grades of insurance for safety and actually if you don't know how the rates can go up, that's taken in fact. Also, what are we doing? Not us here or the fine. I've been here calling and not once have I got any of you guys, elected officials, to say, let's shut Georgia up. Let's get something done for the, for the city. Let's have a workshop saying like this has got, this is coming in. That's why we're stuck to where we are. So we know as soon as you can, please get the television back for transparency's sake. This is ridiculous. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. My, just a quick question on the Leland Park. First of all, on the open volleyball, is that volleyball, the double lead is, so someone that's not on the volleyball team, are they still able to participate in an open volleyball or is it all?
No, so that would be in substitute of drop in. So the whole idea was that because there's so many people that have it already on their schedule for Wednesday night to keep it on Wednesday night. So it would be in place of that, but if there ends up not being a league, then it'll just continue to be drop in volleyball.
Okay. So what do you have? Do you have any?
Nobody yet.
Okay. Oh, the school's starting. You got a lot of high school, high schools or college and people from Pomona, San Diego. So maybe something will happen over there. But thank you for that. On the Leland Park, we need center, I'd like to be involved in what's going on over there. Cause I meant with USDA, as I mentioned, I think I mentioned before. USDA was down here and with some of your staff was down there and said that they want to push that as far as they can. So let me know when you, when you know what I mean. I think Blaine is going to be involved in that too. So I'd like.
In regards to phase two?
The phase two.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'll have to talk to Todd about that because I'm not sure where we're at with that right now.
Okay. I don't know if Blaine has any, I know that you, it was mentioned that you two have been talking about it. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let me know when you do, do me because that's going to be a big ticket item, you know, when you do one point six million and wanting to know what's going to go in there. So. Last, you mentioned pickleball. What kind of, you have an email that has been sent out an email. Is there another method that you usually have a fire run out?
I haven't finished the September newsletter, so I can definitely put it in the newsletter.
All right. That's on my hand. Is there a motion? Any questions on bottom? If not, do I have a motion to approve item E sixteen?
I make a motion to approve item fifty.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Same here. Item seven, city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor, council member, staff and public. I just wanted to mention that in talking with all my city manager cohorts and and different groups. There are several openings for the city. Recruiting is very tough right now and it's really tough everywhere. The port of police departments, we're not seeing a lot of hits on the director of public works engineer, associate planner. I mean, even kind of talking about grant writers and project managers, IT people and recreation services manager. It's not, as a matter of, we're not working at it hard, which is that I just want to express that we're just not seeing it like we're, we're thinking we would. And I want to spend the kudos to the staff and and filling in in times where there's uncertainty as to to those that are gone that we're kind of filling in and working hard to to fill in where we can. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Also, you would notice that there was a email went out about the city school district joint special meeting and then also their, the idea is to have a state of the city. And I'm kind of feeling that the council would like to have the state of the city first and then the city school district joint meeting, which the school tentatively set a meeting, but we didn't get a full council on that. So we don't have that set up yet. And I just want to know from the council. I, I sent out for the state of the city, I sent to the department heads to request their PowerPoint slides and their presentations that could go for the city state of the city. So we have each department head's information ready. And then, so I'm going to be reaching out to you for dates for this, for the state of the city sometime maybe early September. And then, then we can maybe pursue the city, city school district meeting. I know probably we're really pushing for that and, and Dr. Handel sent out a date, but we didn't check on our side yet. So we did and we couldn't get that date fulfilled. So we'll try to reach out to you folks on that.
My concern with that was I, I would like to know what the school wants to, to discuss.
Yeah.
So that we know, you know, what we're going to talk about.
I think what they're going to, they want to do is some, something similar to what we did before where they present their projects and kind of how we did it before. That one, I think it was two years ago, maybe three years ago. And where the department heads on our side and you as elected officials gave updates. But they want to do their slides on the projects they're working on and stuff like that. That's kind of what they want.
I see that, that when you're doing, when we have our presentation and their presentation. To me, the state of the community is what we need to do with. And that's why I wanted to find out what specifics the school want to report to it.
They, they, according to Dr. Handel, it's, it's really about sort of what their projects are and what they're working on and what they want to express to us, what they're doing. But I don't have the specific items listed and that's just kind of work. They want to do it like they did a couple of years ago when we went there. Similar kind of presentation.
To me, the state of the city is more important because there's so many, so, so much information regarding what you're doing.
Yeah.
You, you look at the flood, you look at the river, you look at the growth theater, you look at Central Park, you look at, you know, we could go on for days just talking about some things that are going on. But the skeleton, the housing, the finance, the audit. And so to me, let's get that done and then we can see what they.
I, I assume that. It's just that somehow this farther out they got out there and, but I knew that you guys wanted to get the first kind of state of the city. So if you don't mind, we'll just have, I'll just have want to reach out to you on a special meeting and set something up.
As long as I, to me personally, as long as I know the specifics of what they want to.
I'll get that. I'll maybe I'll email that to you guys.
But it sounds like they'll even talk of each other. Cause if we do the state of the city first, we really shouldn't have to repeat that information at their meeting.
That's my.
Sort of like, here's the packet of what we had and then have that meeting be what they want to present to us, right? I don't know. This is my first time doing this.
Yeah. I mean, what happened before is we, they gave us their information, projects, and then we also gave, you know, updates from each one of our departments at the joint.
See, that's the state of the city.
Yes, we can use that.
That's not that, what is, what is the school board? They can come to our meeting and then let me go to theirs if there's a specific thing related to their, their building or whatever their status and their projects.
And maybe we could just say things that we overlap on.
I did see that the Santa Barbara School also had a, a track meeting. And so I was really interested in that, but I would be for the city of Hope to be to have their first community meeting and then.
Just go from there. Yeah.
Okay. I have a, regarding your report, Todd, I have several items. And I know that Mr. Alvarez will nine, George, you do enough of what we guys are talking about now. Let me talk about my, my problem. Okay, thank you. Item six, on our report, page two is a groundbreaking, this, you know, this coming Friday, two P M, the three fifteen for the Scolarthe Court. So that's important. Item seven, early twenty-three floods. I know that I talked to Lavenino this past Thursday and I think chief of working with San Diego group, they all have, they all have the growing information. And what's happening there, they're meeting on a monthly basis for updates. They, FEMA has provided some fixes to that whole, the whole string, not only the three areas that we're looking at, which includes just the county park site, but they're looking at the sewer treatment plant. So they have, the engineers at FEMA have information about what's due. And the county and the state is asking, are you going to pay for it?
Yeah.
About what's going on with that. On item nine.
Could I, could I add on just a discussion on that piece? This particular area in seven is really just what the damage was and what they're willing to reimburse for. What I think you're talking about is a broader issue. So this is just more of what we're trying to get right now from what was damaged.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that, that they are involved. They're really critically involved in what's going on.
They are.
Item nine, highway one and one sixty-six, Caltrans actually met with Taylor Farms out there a couple of weeks ago, a week ago. And they toured the district, one of the district managers, district five was out there. And they actually toured the site. They're looking at ways to mitigate, first of all, the priority is the safety of the, of the resident regarding traffic. And the flow that's going to happen within the Passe de la and highway, both highway one sixty-six, Visto Street and also Flower Street. So they're really on top of it. Their SBK, Taylor Farms and Caltrans is on top of it. So.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
Yeah, they're, they're really moving forward on it. Mr. Alvarez, you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a little leery about having the school board and getting, I was happy you guys got together. Well, close to thirteen years ago, the discussion with the Passe de la, where the school came in here wanting and forcing the city council not to go and give a green light to the development because the school wanted seven point five extra acres. Okay? So that project was held because of the needs of the school and it screwed the city up because we needed the tax base of all those homes to keep things going. Right? Because of that, the, the children have suffered not having the school done. Shame on the school district. The idiot at that time was Hugh Delora. Okay, I'll make, and that was the person who came into here and developed that joint venture. Municipals are municipalities. School board are school board. You can't mesh the two and do city business. If they said, have them separate. Okay, they can come here and check it out, but they have no jurisdiction to tell you what the hell to do. And because of these idiots at that time, we lost close to fifteen years of tax based income for what they wanted. And the kids got screwed on the view. Thank you.
Yeah, that was five acres and they actually bought the five acres. And you're right. They, when we went to talk to them about the, what was, what was going on there, because they had plans for seventeen acre site as opposed to a twelve acre site. So we said, hold on, that's five acres belongs to the city while I do that. And so we negotiated with them. Actually, they paid seven hundred thousand dollars for that, which is Quimby Act money that's being used for current parks. So any questions regarding this item?
But I, I know, I know it's been a while, but we are actually, we have ordered signs for city hall. Parking, no parking and for Al's Union, that parking lot to be allowed for parking, but from midnight to six in the morning, no parking. We're with the idea that we don't have an ordinance to allow us to toy, but only citations. So that's in the works. We anticipate in talk with Rudy, probably about three to four weeks before we get the signs and everything set up and delivered our way. So I apologize that that hasn't happened as quickly, but you know, we were kind of having questions about the ordinance. So we kind of paused on it, but we're going to be moving forward with it now.
Okay. Yeah, the rationale for that is that people can park it for the businesses, but then they'll leave the cars there overnight.
That's my report.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff and community. Just a quick update. The, we sent a wildfire rescue team. We got called by state and county. So we're part of a strike team. It's going up to Preston City. We're going to see what's going on. This could be the Smith River on Bud's Fire. So they're heading out of town. As far as traffic, just addressing those things and right before I came, hour before I did get a person U-turn in front of the grocery store. So they did get a citation. And our calls for service, we're staying on top of those. So as far as our service to our community, calls for service, we're, we're where we should be. And I still do, even though we're trying to work through our school morning traffic. I see our councilman sees that I'm out there in the mornings. Yes, you do. And also in the afternoon, giving out the tickets and taking care of, today was kind of special because I had a mom who parked illegally. And she was just trying to get her kids there. So she asked me, can I walk the preschooler or kindergarten up to the class while she moved her car? So it was kind of cool. Yeah. So middle row was really nice. I like to think also HR, we talked about as far as personnel. We have two police officers right now, applicants that are going through the background process and one hopefully be starting the academy. So we're, we're working on that. And we also are going to be putting two on a waitlist. So as time and money hopefully becomes available, we can start really increasing our department. And with that, we also are in the final stages of interviewing for the fire captain open position. And so HR has been really pushing that, helping us to kind of get along on that one. We did a tour. I got called down to one, one fifty-one of this phone. They have supplied me with their security camera plans. So I'm still kind of going through that. So as they push forward, so we can hopefully get them on board as, as soon as possible. We've been using a camera on highway one and I've been informed by Caltrans that I do not have an encroachment permit to keep the camera there. We're trying to deal with traffic. And so we've
I do move it.
We've moved it, let's put it that way. I don't know where Caltrans is keeping an eye on us, but we're, we're taking care of our traffic issues in, in that regard.
We made that Larry.
And we really appreciate that. And the last part two is, again, I think the, the mayor and council. I want to, I'm going to write up, I want to give a real nice shout out to the entire police department concerning this, this homicide. The mother, just give a quick synopsis, was trying to get a report of a missing person and others would not take the report. And our officer just stepped up, did the report. We got the information into the system. And with that, that's how the hit came about because the person who found the vehicle was able to notify the police department because of that hit on the vehicle and they were able to check the cameras there at the border and were able to see the person crossing across from the border. That helped to make this case so much faster to be able to locate that person and so forth. So it was an entire department that came in. We put the, the case together, put the paperwork together. We worked really hand in hand with San Diego Police Department and they gave us some great kudos. Because that was the catalyst that, that really put this whole thing together was the start of getting that information out, getting it in the system so that the vehicle and, and the persons were going to be looked for. So I'm extremely happy and proud of the officers who we, they all came back into the office and everyone took apart and really put a nice patch, give this one San Diego did call. We were able to provide everything that they needed, where the, where the films were, where the camera shots were, descriptions and everything else. All they had to do was just kind of put the puzzle together. So really nice work and, and we stayed in contact. And they, they let me know as soon as they had word that the person was, was going to be there and how the apprehension was, was going to happen. So I'm just going to be a shout out to them. And that is my report. Listen, any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Chief. By the way, that was item eight, Director of Public Safety. Any questions from the audience or council?
I just wanted to say, I really appreciate your report. What a great overview of where things are at because I think we're all sensitive to the fact that staffing has been short and our staff has been really going above and beyond during really difficult challenges lately. And so thank you for, because it is something we're really aware of and we're sensitive to. So I'm really glad to hear there's some positive recruitment's happening and some ground being made to get our staff that support and help. So thank you. And please thank staff, you know, for all the work that they're doing because we definitely feel that and, and really want to confirm that sentiment of gratitude.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. On the side, don't I see a, a new body to the seat right here? Hannah, would you want to introduce?
Uh, one second. Sorry.
I can.
Technical.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Mayor and city council members, staff, public, I'd like to introduce you to Robert Salinas. He's going to be filling in and handling this situation and also being and taking part of the events and monitoring the facilities during those events. And so he'll be transitioning in and running our, our meetings. So thank you.
Welcome, Robert. And he was on the recreation commission before, so he knows the rules. So. Okay, go ahead.
I just, I was reading that Red Drive in Week, you're being on cover. And so hopefully that may be who wanted to, if I did those, maybe Mary Byrne or McKinsey to maybe drive locals to them.
Will you shoot me that? So you can't. Thank you.
Okay. Without further ado, regular business item nine, I don't know if Hannah need to pull that up or do we need, maybe perhaps not. Information report from the planning staff on possibility of regulating food trucks and sales carts within the city limits. Mr. Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's good being back live and direct with you instead of doing these Zoom meetings from all over the place. As you know, the city has no food truck ordinance. We currently approve all business licenses for food trucks and food carts that come through. Staff has brought this topic to council a couple of times in past years. And so we're again giving you an opportunity this evening to discuss the topic and decide if a majority of council is interested in possibly starting an ordinance to regulate food trucks. You received a memo from me a couple of weeks ago, or almost a couple of weeks ago, in anticipation of this evening's discussion. And it contained the matrix. And I'm just curious if he's filled up those matrices and see if then the mayor has done it in the past. But we could talk about that during the discussion. This evening, after we conclude the discussion, we have a number of options. One of them is just to file this report and the new planner will bring it back in the future. Sorry, one of them is just to file this report and the new planner will bring it back in the future. Uh, or if you would like to go forward with an ordinance, we can craft one. Um, we mentioned the city of Santa Maria has had one in effect for a number of years. Although now that they're doing their um, their Friday um, activities at Com Center West. They're inviting food trucks which are violating the the orders itself. But that's, it it's, I think food trucks are being seen in a different light now. And and so that's why we're bringing this to you to see if maybe you do wanna look at the positive aspects of it and and go forward. So that's all I have unless you have questions. And I'm not sure if there are any public members like to speak. I did get a copy of the matrix to the Business Association, they'd asked for that, and I haven't heard back.
You know, you mentioned the the GVA and their, and your report and second paragraph. These restaurant bathrooms and trash cans, eating businessmen parking near brick and mortar restaurants, high profits to avoid taxes. Health inspections and unannounced are unannounced for restaurants, but can be scheduled for food trucks. It sounds like there's there's a leaning from that side not to to actually enact some kind of ordinance that that controls that. So.
Yeah, but they're, they had a a very lively discussion and I tried to summarize the the different points uh, that were made by the people that it's clear that a majority of them who are the business owners in town um, would are feeling that a food truck, if it were able to set up somewhere like San Guadalupe Street, uh, could take away their business.
I, you know, in the past, and I know that we talked many years ago about this. And one of the reasons that we did talk about it was somebody was parking uh, on Oliver Street near near um, across the street from Masstani's, a food truck. And then uh, I think Jack Owens was part of that whole process to where they basically shoot him out to where then they parked over there on some um, uh.
Seamus.
Well, that not there, but also on sand company, there on Gordon Sand Company where that corner is. Now we have fruit vendors and stuff like that. So that's where they were shoed that way and it didn't seem to be a problem. Uh, I know that Laoco Prinsens has their, as does Santa Maria, has their event. Often where they have a food truck vendors and they do the wine tasting and other stuff. So um, I know that what's the thing to do in the council and and require something like this?
I think we need some sort of mechanism to have guidelines. Um, I don't know exactly what that looks like yet. I think it should complement our businesses downtown. I think there is a way that we can collaborate and have them work together. Um, I think food trucks really are an opportunity for community engagement. I love the events that Santa Maria puts on and Laoco puts on. Um, so I think there's a lot of positive things. I don't think it's necessarily a negative. Or do I want to deter that from happening? If anything, I just want it to find, I want it to be an ordinance with balance. Something that complements the downtown because we don't have limited parking downtown. So if someone essentially parks downtown, I don't see it having a way to limit that without some sort of ordinance. So I do think there's some sort of mechanism that we need to develop, just with clear guidelines.
Yeah, there was one, and you know, the going to be uh, social club. They, I think they, we gave them permission to have their food truck there. And we don't, we didn't have an ordinance to actually move on that. But then you have a theater parks as a food truck. There are theater parks. And at one point, I thought, I think it is, it's uh, basically informal that people could park their vehicles like that on private property. So um, I think we need some standard to say, uh, okay, if you wanted to have something that's in Memorial Park. That there's food truck, uh, you know, a whole bunch of food trucks that were Korean food, Japanese food, Filipino food, Mexican food. Probably not Mexican food, there's nothing but that. And I know that uh, Brother Cafe may have something to say about this, but I think that there needs to be some kind of uh, we don't need a major uh, you know, ordinance that to see to where we're, it's an overkill, but there needs to be something that's going on. So I'd like to hear, I know. Council, anything? I'm gonna ask George, you mentioned that Mr. Alvarez, uh, like the comment on this.
Having my family for generations in the restaurants downtown in Pasalita. I'm familiar with the business of food. The problem we have here is we have to save our existing business. We have in the restaurant trade. Okay? Uh, it's a bare bones community. Uh, we lost the biggest food restaurant in the Far Western. It's in Oregon. Okay, that was our drop. Imagine, we're famous for the Far Western. We're, we're well known for Mexican food. God knows we have Mexican food. But same token, there should be, if you go that route, restrictions where the person who has a food truck meets the guidelines that our restaurant owners are required to have. They're treacherous when it comes to food. They have to be, they have to have a license. Each person handling has to go to school and get a certificate to make sure they can handle the food on that. Also, their parking liability is another factor. Uh, is it cost effective for maybe what, five Taco Wagon, just hypothetically speaking, to be in the city for what amount of money we're gonna get, which they might, our downtown businesses are gonna lose money. They have to pay the mortgage, the rent, the truck doesn't. Okay? The building liability. Limited less on truck system. I'm not saying totally against it. No. There's factors here that you have to take care of the existing business. We're in a regrowth situation in this community. Where we're trying to have people come in and expand bothly different foods, other than Spanish, Mexican food, but something that's gonna spark. Like we had a tune, the new place where the Akuah. These clock is, they have that little restaurant there. It's a newcomer in town on that. So again, these are the things we have to consider for the well-being of the existing businesses. Of the mention of Guadalupe Cafe, having something to do with it uh, was really gonna call for because you're the only ones here. You don't know if they're gonna say anything or not.
I knew you were here.
No, but that's not gonna pass either. Okay, thank you.
I uh, if I use your name in vain, uh, Guadalupe Cafe, I apologize. Uh, what happens to, like, you know, looking at our matrix, the matrix was starting confusing. Uh, I would personally, I wouldn't want to, for the approval to go through the city council. I think it needs to be administrative use of permit. And I think that there needs to be a certain location given, uh, like I mentioned with the uh, Veterans Memorial Park, if they want to do a special event there. I don't have a problem somebody having, to me personally, having uh, private property to have a food truck there. They go through a permitting process. And that's where I know the the GPA was looking at uh, some of their, the health uh, uh, requirements, health department requirements. I think they need to go through health.
They, they're supposed to.
Yeah.
All food, all food trucks have to go through a budget and they go to public health for the initial approvals of their permits and then they have regular checks as well.
I also spoke to the uh, county public health department. Anytime that anybody is having an event here with food, it actually has to go through the county or public health department, which sometimes I think some events haven't been going through. That is something to know. But I don't see um, issue with like in the touches sound, right? Um, they're having a car club. And they're at Leeway Park, I think it would be. So are they doing events? I'm not sure. I'm assuming, but I would think, I would think that's something that would be reasonable to have there.
I'm gonna ask you a question. Um, it it sounds like um, events and things happening in the couple parks we have seem to be okay. What are your thoughts about issuing a permit for someone who just takes the parking space on Guadalupe Bay Street? Is that something you want to um, not do?
So I also, I don't want to deter our businesses from partnering with food trucks. Because we do have restaurants that may wanna partner like a coffee shop with a crate cart or uh, dessert with a dinner place. That's really big right now in restaurants. So I don't want to deter that. Uh, but I do think the time should be limited. I I don't think it should be an infinite, like, oh, you got a permit for the day and you can be there all day. I think it should be um, with some sort of time limit. I I don't wanna discourage or say never on Guadalupe Street because I do think there's opportunities for for restaurants and businesses to partner with a variety of trucks. Not just the taco truck or food truck, but dessert trucks, there's great carts, you know, the fruit vendors have really, yeah. So there may be opportunities there. So I would, yes, I would like limitation. I I don't think I'm a hard no, never on Guadalupe Street. Because like I said, I think we might, we might choke off some businesses from an opportunity um, to partner with a food truck or a food cart. So it's just something to think about.
Thank you. I think uh, in looking at that, it's a special event for them.
Right.
You know, what if, what if somebody says every week, I want to do a special event with someone in front of the Guadalupe restaurant or in front of a Pasalita. Uh, so there needs to be some language that says, that gets some definition.
Yeah.
Of uh, you know.
How often and maybe length of time?
Yeah.
Right?
Well, if it was like a business to apply for that special event, if it was a once a month deal where they they needed somebody to collaborate and coordinate and have that food, then you know, we we put in something in in the process of just, we're not having all four weekends. It's it's, you know, and it's that day you you submit your paperwork and these are the hours you'll be working and and we know.
In Santa Maria, a slightly different um, topic, um, they require permits for garage sales. Uh, and I kind of remember it was, Phil, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think you were allowed to have them twice a year or something. It it wasn't very often, so it wasn't like you could do it every weekend. And and maybe there could be something like that brought into this.
They were uh, four times a year, each once each quarter, once each quarter, and there was no fee.
That's for yard sale.
Yeah, for yard sale. There was no fee to the garage.
I think that's where Jack, uh, we we, on that yard sale stuff, we were gonna push it, no signs up on the post and all that other stuff. That never came out, that never came with permission. So but and then that, I don't wanna get into the little food carts either because those, Santa Maria has an issue with those uh, yeah, with those fruit vendors. I think what they got fifty or sixty of them. So and there's a general process for that. But I don't see that happening here.
Well, then let's talk about that because that was something we were thinking of including in the uh, in the ordinance. Because right now, um, there are a number of those that are approved already through business licenses. And um, if if you want to make a distinction and say, no, we're not gonna do those. Uh, didn't we say we we can't restrict in residential areas?
Language that said we were limited on what we can restrict.
Yeah.
We were more limited on those than battery trucks. And and so the, if you're interested in regulating this the sidewalk carts, we just bring you the maximum probably that we're allowed to as part of the draft ordinance. So it'd probably be easier than trying to figure out what's allowed, what's not.
Well, maybe I don't travel enough downtown, but I don't, I don't see those.
Yeah. They, it could be a problem, I think, in in the park when there's stuff going on. Can't stop them uh, from moving, but you can prevent them from being stationary. I mean, they can walk around. That's what the law requires, but they can't set up and and stay in one spot. They have to like make a sale, move, make a sale, move.
Get deep into this stuff.
I believe, I don't know if anybody else, but we had a, I think about two, three weeks ago, we had somebody selling piggy banks.
That was seamless, right?
No.
We had a conversation.
Okay. Okay.
I will say that I believe that food trucks limited will help bring an economic boost that sometimes you can drag down Guadalupe and sometimes after five thirty or six, everything's closed. And then sometimes you just wanna grab a bite to eat. You don't wanna go back. Um, and so sometimes it might be nice to have that flexibility.
Well, the goal would not be, not to financially impact the student, no, the
The breaking more.
Breaking more.
I think that's an opportunity to complement and not, not at one dominate and impact the other. I agree.
If you can do that on one page, it would be good.
I do think it's an opportunity though for the city to implement to something that's very current, very popular. Um, and what a great way to have that conversation start. And then of course, if there's negative impacts, we can always make adjustments as it improves.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the place, yes, does have a food truck? No, that they could have. I mean, without, we don't have gone into.
As long as, um, that I know, anytime a nonprofit does an event here, we just have to go through the county public health department.
But then that doesn't say, we, we don't have anything that controls them. Okay. You don't have to go on there?
I'd just like to see a nod of heads, if we've got at least three nods to do there. There's a nod.
You're, you're not bound by that nod.
I know, I know. But still, it it gives me the direction I need. Were there any public speakers that like?
Okay, can you come up, sir?
Yeah, I'll just make it real quick and brief because I know a lot about these things. I've licensed them before. But what you guys can do is that you make it a minor use permit, then you need to get, collect an assessment fee for the road usage of these things to make money. And you provide some sort of license that's a year fee for them to enter Guadalupe and do business aside from a business license. So I think that should be something prominent.
Paying in the wood tax?
In there, so that you have uh,
Some control.
Does that make sense? Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at with it. Because they're gonna have to have a commissary and the cleanliness already in their health department set before they're uh, gonna come here. So you're not gonna be able to collect revenue in that sort of aspect. So if you have a, a, you know, minor use permit that says, you know, we collect a road assessment fee, cause you're a truck. And maybe there's a service tour assessment for grease interceptors, so that it's co-competitive with restaurants. You gotta remember, some restaurants can have commissaries here. So someone could actually set up a commissary for food trucks to use it and rent it out and actually, you know, have some space rented out.
We do have one. Alright.
If I can comment on that too, um, are, we could turn the auditorium kitchen into a commissary. And that's one thing that Tag had brought to my attention as soon as he started.
Yeah, well, thank you for the comments.
Thank you.
We'll get working on it.
Thank you so much.
Moving on, we have a gentleman, uh, we're looking at in ten counters, California employer pension. Pre-funding trust.
Alright, can everyone hear me?
The subject is Calpers California employers pension, um, pre-funding trust. Um, the recommendation is that the city council review and consider adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-three sixty-nine authorizing participation in the Calpers California employers pension pre-funding trust. The background on this is Calpers established the BE TPT, which is an IRS. Section one fifteen trust set up for the sole purpose of receiving employer contributions that will pay for pension costs. The program has been around since twenty nineteen with a hundred million assets under management as of December twenty-seven twenty twenty-two, with some of that participants, including cities, counties, state districts. Oh, sorry, school districts and special districts. Section one fifteen trusts are used by cities and counties to reserve funds against pension liabilities. Funds can be transferred from a section one fifteen trust to pay for pension costs. Um, they cannot be used for other purposes. And I have Lilo online who will go through the presentation and explain that.
Good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me? Hi, hello. All all this food talk is making me hungry. Alright, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, thank you. Well, uh, thanks for inviting me to be here with you meeting tonight. My name is Lilo and I'm an outreach analyst here at Calpers. I primarily work in the pre-funding section one fifteen trust program. So go ahead and go to slide two. Uh, these discussions generally takes forty-five minutes, um, uh, but I've condensed this to fifteen minutes. And so I would ask if you have questions, um, let's address those at the end and get through these slides real quick. Uh, some of your questions might be answered through them as well. So for the next fifteen minute, if I can have your attention and uh, we're gonna be discussing your city's pension situation and then discuss one of the tools that the city isn't using yet that a lot of other employers are. Uh, it's a tool to help with pension costs, the one fifteen trust. Slide three, please. So this data comes from the city's two thousand twenty-one pension valve. Now, these are So this data comes from the city's two thousand twenty-one pension valve. Now, these are uh reported one year behind. Your two thousand twenty-two is going to be released next month, uh but this is what we use for now. Uh we can see here that the city participates in five our pension plan. Uh chief, I see you sitting there. You've got your safety fire, safety police, safety, that's your group and uh, uh well-funded. Um and so uh I aggregated the totals of the funded status. Um the funded status is just a easy, quick term that. Um actuaries use to measure your uh debt to assets ratio. So eighty-six is good, you guys are trending in the right direction. Unfortunately, that eighty-six means that's two point six million dollars of unfunded liabilities. And so um that two point six million dollars is amortized over twenty-plus years. And so this year, the U A L or unfunded liability payment will be three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Plus your normal cost, which is perpetual at three forty-nine thousand dollars. So that's total of six seventy-four thousand dollars that's coming to Calpers by the end of this fiscal year. Now, what I did was I also went ahead and highlighted the two point six and the three hundred forty-nine thousand dollars in red because we're gonna discuss that in the next slide, please. So when it comes to cost consideration, we're looking at your normal cost, which is perpetual. And those are continuing to rise. That's rising because of raises? Or perhaps if the city hires on more bodies, uh we account for those as well. Uh unfunded accrual liability grows if the pension fund does not reach six point eight percent interest. And so the employer, your city, has to pick up that difference. So in our last uh capital market assumption, we are projecting that cost is gonna fluctuate heavily in the next five to fifteen years. And so the question lies to what are employers are doing? What are they doing about these increases? Because it's gonna put pressure on your budget. Go to next slide, please. And so what we're proposing is that the city look at using a one fifteen trust. Um for those that aren't super familiar with a one fifteen trust, um government employers are not. For most are not allowed to take their budget and then, and invest it in assets, equity stocks. So they're left with things like county treasury, money markets, uh C Ds, which are doing too bad right now, but long-term it's under one percent. And so some employers are in a situation where they can use um stocks, invest in stocks, but very limited, they have a cap. And so with a one fifteen trust, uh it, it doesn't abide by those rules. And uh you can expose to more assets here, equity here, and have an opportunity to earn more to pay for pension. Um and so being that you can do that with a one fifteen trust, there's limitations to where it has to be dedicated for the purpose of either O P E P or pension. And tonight, we're just gonna focus on pension. We'll leave O P E P for another day. Um but Calpers, uh these section one fifteen trust was formed under legislation and placed under the umbrella of Calpers. So these are in, in deep, independent programs and they are not tied to the Calpers pension fund. But the O P E P trust was established sixteen years ago and the pension trust, which we're discussing tonight, was established in two thousand nineteen. So we've been delivering and uh um offering these trusts for a long time. We do have over eighty, ninety-one as of tonight of employers that participate in the C E P P T, which is the California employers pension pre-funding trust. It's a mouthful, so I'm just gonna say accept uh to make it short for the pension trust. So it offers two investment portfolio. We'll look at it. Next slide, please. Um Calpers is the largest section one fifteen trust provider and that's in the entire United States. And so you can see here, we have actually as of tonight, one hundred sixty cities or towns that participate in this trust. Next, please. So um employers are generally used to parking future pension payments. Or, or if they're saving money for pension payments in the future, when I say future, we're looking at two years out. Generally, those are earmarked and parked inside your um general fund, which sits in the county treasury life uh of that nature. Those generally earn less than one, one percent. The risk is low. What you put in will always stay in the black. It's short-term. It's essentially your checking account. When you're ready to deploy that to Calpers. Um you hop over to the far left side where I put Calpers pension system. Uh we strive for six point eight percent and uh in order to earn a six point eight percent, we have to take a little bit more risk at eleven point four. That's the volatility. It's a long-term horizon. Not everyone's gonna retire tomorrow and there's no liquidity. So if you remember earlier, showed you your pension plans, there's a couple of plans on there that was over a hundred percent, which is really good. But the thing with the pension plan is money travels one way. It doesn't come back. If you have excess amount, it just sits there. You can't request money back out or shift it to pay another plan. So this is where the section one fifteen C E P P T comes into play. It sits nicely in the middle between wherever your money, your, your general fund is and the Calpers pension fund. Where you can park those money set aside for pension and give those money an opportunity to earn more than county treasury. It's got two strategies there. You can participate in both or just one of them. Uh it's got the risk, which is lower than the uh pension fund. Um and you determine how much you want to put in, when you want to put it out, pull it out. There's no minimum and low limitations. Um though the verbiage with the word irrevocable tends to scare off a lot of folks, but there's ways you can get access to the funds and pull the money out, uh back out. Next slide, please. So one of the main purposes employers use this is to, one, to grow your pension assets, money that's set aside to pay for pension later. Um I listed your payments on there again. Um and um so this is the first way of using this program. Slide nine, please. The, here's what I, what I did in this slide is I took your normal cost contribution in the second column. So in, in year twenty-three, twenty-four, as I showed you earlier, three hundred forty-nine thousand dollars is what your city's sending to here to Calpers. This year, this is the, the normal cost. Over the next eight years, it's gonna rise to four hundred forty-two thousand dollars. I highlighted that, highlighted that in orange. What this is, is this is a hypothetical scenario that in uh, in year eight, uh year thirty, thirty-one. If we were to invest two hundred ninety-six point eight thousand dollars and invest that over eight years with that four point five percent compounding interest. We should generate enough to fill in the gap so that the city has enough to pay for that normal cost that year. And this will help alleviate pressure off your budget. And so not everyone has two ninety-six in their wallet to contribute and, but anything's better than nothing and the sooner the better. Next slide, please. Uh this is probably the second most popular way employers are using this is where they're just setting aside a small amount of budget for a rainy day fund. In case unfunded liability crawls up or they have a pension spike, then they can, they have access to uh money saved aside. They can reach in and use it for, to help pay. Next slide, please. So just really quick, I'm gonna, for time purposes, I'm gonna hop right down to the last uh bullet point there. How to get money out is your request, uh you send a request to our, our team here. And uh we would reimburse the money right back out to you. You can pull out what you pay for pension costs. That includes normal call, unfunded liabilities, or if your city made additional discretionary payments, you can pull that out of the, the trust. So essentially, if I had a million dollars in the trust and my normal cost was two hundred thousand, I just focus on normal cost. I would be able to de- deplete that trust in five years, two hundred thousand dollars sequences. Next slide, please. I'm gonna hop over this slide. I'm hoping that all of you would either later get access to the hard copy or digital copy. But this just shows you what other employers are doing. Um we have employers that participate in the trust for four or five years, hasn't put anything in there. And uh it's, it's, it's quite okay. There's no charge to join the trust. Uh when they're ready to deploy money, they will do it when they have, they have so excess amount of funds. Next slide, please. So this is the uh composition of the uh portfolio. And it com- it composes of the five asset public classes that are passively managed to these indexes. And you'll see the strategies on the right side and the, the different slices when they depart, within the participation levels of each of these benchmarks. Next slide, please. This is the time weighted investment returns of both the O P E P trust on top and the set pension trust on the bottom. I'm purposely showing this to you all so that you see that the uh, the O P E P trust uses the same asset classes, so it's gonna be very similar. The set pension, we rolled out right before the pandemic, so there's not a whole lot of data to show you all. But over the eight different time periods, we can see here that uh we've been able to either uh meet the target or exceed the target, the benchmark. Next slide, please. So there is a small cost. We charge uh, uh twenty-five basis points on the assets that sits inside the trust. And the twenty-five basis points is cut between three hundred sixty-five days. And so if an employee had a million dollars in there, we charged twenty-five hundred dollars at the end of the year. Uh we're not for profit. We don't want a commission or bonus. Uh that's why we're able to keep these fees so low. This is just to keep the lights on here. Next slide, please. Uh we'll hop over this. Yeah, go ahead and, yeah. So I'm pretty much, go ahead, go to the last slide. I'm sorry. We're, I'm, yeah, thank you so much. I'm uh, I'm done for, for now. I wanted to open up the floor for any questions that you all might have.
I'm sure you got a lot of questions if we can understand all this.
I know. You had, like I said, usually it takes around forty-five minutes going back and forth, makes us you understand it, but uh. Um Janice uh will soon become an expert at this and so uh you can work with me and work with Janice and uh, yeah. Let me know if you have any questions. Otherwise, um you have my email and work with your finance team. They're very knowledgeable.
Well, thank you for that. We're gonna ask your question right now. Give us an update. Where, where, where are you?
Well, for this, um there's my um. I'm for Calpers, um one because it doesn't accomplish anything. We just started up. Um like you said, when we start to put money in it, that's all we'll start um getting the two point five basis points. But at this time, we're just recommending that we open, get ready to start saving for um paying our unfunded liability down.
Well, it makes sense. We're not, we're not in a, a bigger hole as many other institutions are, so.
Right.
But we wanna, we wanna start moving up out of that hole.
Absolutely. Um one strategy is um. To go into, to have a money market account or sort of a savings account that, that um accumulates interest. And use those monies to put into this to start it. Um but that's not until later on. Right now, it's not. It wasn't something that I'm, I'm proposing to you right now and wanting to open up the account so that we have.
So I just want to be really clear. No, there's no fee. I noticed the fees from what I can tell from the presentation is just based on what the amount of we actually live in the account and I went correct. So there's no. You could start, like he mentioned, start it like a no one adult to follow. Yeah, great. I like the flexibility of it.
I do too.
And I really like the idea that we're forward-thinking financially for something that will be coming down the pipe, even if we're not sitting here. That is something the city will have to be dealing with, dealing with in the future. So absolutely, yeah, great. Thank you for the presentation.
Uh, Todd.
You're welcome.
Comments?
Um on this side, I, I think, you know, the city's, one of the goals is to increase its reserves. This is sort of a, a back way of doing it because you're, you're investing into this where you, you would have been spending more on it. This way, you're gonna be eventually saving more because you're getting better return and then better investment. So therefore, your reserves will increase just by virtue of the fact that you're putting energy into this as opposed to um, with more, paying more interest.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would. Sorry, I, I would just like to mention that this is the only two that we know of to, what's your funded to stay ahead. There, there's no other tool that we're aware of.
Council, any comments?
Thank you.
And then we have a resolution uh twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine. We're relying on you, Janice.
Working on it.
Is there a motion to approve resolution or is there a question of resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-nine? Or is there a motion to approve resolution? Uh yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I, the fact that the staff represented that no money would be deposited, the resolution silent on that. Um there, there, there's a sentence in there. It says a one-time deposit can be made at this time.
Yeah.
But we don't have any, there's nothing in here that says uh the council will approve that or.
Right.
So I mean, I, I don't know if we want to add that or if you. I was wondering, yes, I, I assumed that, that we were gonna be making, when I read this, that we were gonna be making the deposits in the third.
Oh, no, no, of course.
Can we just insert language? Uh a one-time deposit can be made at this time. And, and if needed, city can make additional deposits in the future, well, but no deposits uh will be made without council approval. Okay. If we can just add that to the resolution, then, then it's clear that we're not actually authorizing any money going in there right now. Is counsel okay with that?
She's okay with that? Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Okay.
As long as everyone's on a big page.
With the corrections, uh is there, with a, uh is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine?
I motioned to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine with the amended uh words.
There's a second in the discussion. Roll call, please.
Council member Costa.
Hi.
Council member Ropes.
Hi.
Council member Hernandez.
Hi.
Council member Lasalle.
Hi.
Mayor Julian.
Hi, all eyes. Thank you, Crystal. Thank you.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, you know, looking at the agenda, I, I would hope we have some people in the audience that if we could move, if it's okay with the council, move item thirteen. Uh, right, uh two, four, eleven and twelve, thirty. Okay?
Yep.
All right, it's fine. Yeah, item thirteen says, uh, eight, seventy-six, my Lipper Street, code of compliance, Mr. Tencos. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council is familiar with the facts of this case from an appeal that was heard. And I'm not sure what date that belongs to.
February.
Oh, March thirteenth, twenty, no, no. When was, oh, May, May ninth, there we go. On May ninth, twenty twenty-three, uh it was a detailed presentation about facts of this case. Uh to summarize, it, it rose out of some unpermitted construction, specifically uh large amounts of concrete. Apparently for a parking lot, the street should be uh retaining wall slash nets. Um and it's unknown whether the concrete and retaining wall constructed in compliance or full compliance with state building code requirements. And in particular, the, the correct amount of rebar was used or it was installed correctly. Uh after uh a long period of attempting to obtain compliance through code enforcement. Compliance order, uh excuse me, a nuisance abatement order was finally uh issued by the city's code compliance hearing officer, Jack Owen. Uh there were seven total hearings. And first one was on September ninth, twenty twenty-one, the final one in February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And at that hearing, uh the issue, the, the ruling that issued at that, uh after that hearing. Provided that all violations would be corrected and inspected honor before Monday, May first, twenty twenty-three. Uh otherwise administrative penalties, two hundred fifty dollars per day would begin to accumulate till the maximum of ten thousand was reached. Uh as authorized by the citizens code, an appeal was timely filed by the responsible parties. The hearing went forward on May ninth and at that hearing. The responsible parties were also represented by Mr. Matthew Goodman, who was here tonight. And yeah, basically said that he would help the responsible party to get through the plan check process. In the permitting process, which is really all the city wanted. So at the suggestion of assistance to the attorney, when he stopped and he was advising the council on what to do, council continued. The, uh, the field until uh. Uh with, with the understanding that staff would bring matter for an update and that's what we're doing here tonight. As said forth in the staff report, uh an application was filed soon after the hearing on May, on May, on the nineteenth, actually. Uh, after that, city staff requested a zoning clearance because that had not yet occurred as it should have. And that took place. All the fees were paid. The zoning clearance was approved on June sixth. And that put the ball back in the court of the building department. The main issue as stated in the staff report is that the city's building inspector, uh, has rejected the photographs. That were, that were provided by the applicant. Who, uh, for him, it is being insufficient for him to conclude that the correct amount of rebar in his placement is in full compliance. With the requirements of the building code, he, uh, as he did from the beginning, he requested that an R scan be done and R is. I guess short for rebar scan, uh, which the applicant has declined to do. Because apparently they believe the photographs are sufficient, but in his opinion. He does not, he is not able to make the determination. He has required a lot of make based on photographs. We've been willing to issue the buildings in it. The, uh, our, our scan is like an X-ray or ground pen, if penetrating rebar will help show the. Uh, rebar and allow the building inspector to make a determination needs to make. The. Uh, only issue is there is gonna be some excavation required, uh, but for the R scan excavation or destruction of the wall would be required. Uh, to get into it, to, to see the rebar, but with the R scan, that can be avoided to a large extent. However, with respect to the puddings, apparently some minor excavation would be required and that's some additional expense. The email sent by the building inspector, uh, to me when I asked him to put his opinion in writing, uh, is in the staff report. Uh, he basically feels it's an unreasonable request because the price range is in about the twelve hundred dollar amount for the R scan. And then there'll be some additional cost for the cutting, uh, excavating of the parking lot, putting in repair. Uh, that pretty much concludes the status report. And, uh, we are able, able to answer your questions and accept your direction. Thank you.
Uh, any, uh, questions to fill before we ask, uh, there's a person that wishes to speak. Uh, I don't know, uh, you, uh, are you the engineer on this one, sir?
Pardon?
Are you the, are you the engineer on this one? You're, you're there, you're assisting them, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm Matthew Goodman.
Okay, uh, you, you heard what the.
I heard everything. I'm awake.
Come on up.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, it's a long one for a wall, okay? Now, uh. What Mr. Rose is leaving out is the rest of the expenses would, would bring this to about twenty thousand dollars on the estimate. So let me just say right off in my opinion, if I was to give my opinion, I'd let him pay the ten grand and not the twenty grand on the wall. Okay, this is a non-habitable. Area, non-havable. It's not a balcony. It's a CMU wall. That we, uh, sent pictures. Now, Mr. Rose has, in his report, that it. Auto, it just went up, okay? He said the wall just appeared. But we have pictures for three years on this. Showing the cement truck, showing the dumpster, showing the debris. Everything that he's alleging here that he didn't see is in photographs that was submitted to you guys as part of your agendas. For these other meetings that I was not, uh, here for, okay? He's asking for a three foot by two foot long trench for excavation. So the excavation to see that rebar is gonna cost twenty thousand dollars to repair and it's a. The wall's built right. It's twenty thousand dollars down the drain for Jose, okay? For a crap shoot that, because this guy says he can't look at pictures. Now, me and Mr. Rose both know Mike Stoker over at the Slow County and. Code enforcement will always understand and notice and be able to see that this is a proper wall, okay? So that's, that's something interesting, you know, because I gotta say, I'm from Northridge, California, and I went through the Northridge earthquake. Remember that nineteen seven, in nineteen ninety-four, it was seven point four. Every CMU wall, it was approved. And, 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 and permitted, fell down. This is a six-foot wall. With a fence on it. It's not gonna fall down. It's been there for three years. I'm asking you guys to accept the photographs because an R scan is gonna show you the exact same things. That the photograph have. And I mean, there's a lot of things that are not up to code that are habitable. The bathrooms in this place are not up to code, yet this is a habitable building. We're talking about a CMU wall that was built properly with the amount of rebar. The reason why it was not permitted properly by the building department is because when Jose went to the planning department and said, I was building this wall. He explained it was six foot. He said you don't need a permit. If. That instance was circumvented, we wouldn't be here right now. I wouldn't be here right now. He built it right. Huge amount of crew, huge amount of money went into this thing. If you're gonna R scan, you're gonna see everything is built up to code. And it's, you know, it's, and, and let me just say, it's not something that takes an engineering staff. We're not having an engineering company assume liability for this. Let Jose assume liability for this. Let it be a, uh. Uh, as-built permit and, and let him assume a liability. I've, I've had that happen before in other instances. With other things in this, in this, uh, type of discrepancies. That's about all I have to say, you know, when we're talking about. Almost an inanimate object and especially with the discrepancy in the size of the properties when you got, you know, a difference in seven feet. And the guy next to him is just, you know, nothing here. There's too many discrepancy to say he's an R scan when it can be just. Completely taken care of. This guy's sensationalizing everything, Mr. Rose. He's almost done with his job. He's gonna be, on, you know, he's going on vacation to, uh. Northern California in a month. And, uh, he's just throwing things out there. It's not necessary. That's what I got to say. And you, you know.
I have a question that you did mention.
Yeah.
On the last time you were here, we mentioned that we would like an R scan. Uh, we mentioned that it would like, we're gonna work with us, give us an update. You don't have no new findings for, for us since the last time you were here?
Well, I don't recall that, to be quite honest with you. I was here to make sure that we were able to comply and to. You know, get everything into plan check.
I think it was clear what we needed to make this, um, to move forward. I was just wondering if there's any.
No, I, I believe not. Um, we were here to move forward with compliance so that I can. Um, as, as he stated, you know, get the zoning and planning. So we did get approved by planning and zoning and paid the fees. So if we didn't do that, basically an R scan would be unnecessary because we didn't get approved by planning and or zone, you know, for zoning. So that would be moot until this meeting anyway. So, and then, let me just say, it's Mr. Rose's opinion that it needs an R scan. And you're gonna cost someone twenty thousand dollars to do something that's gonna show you that it's done well. In all the pictures that he said, any contractor who lays concrete is gonna tell you this new thing I am. And I mean, I just designed these things. I don't have calluses on my hands. But I could, I could definitely look at the pictures and see a dumpster. I could see cement truck. And all the horizontal and vertical rebar that's, you know, required. It's, uh, you know. It's not a safety hazard. It's not a two-story balcony that doesn't have the proper fittings. It's not a habitable area that's gonna cause a fire or something. If seismic, you know, anomaly happens, yeah, maybe that wall's gonna fall down at about six point oh. That's what I have to say.
You have mentioned that, uh, we didn't see, we didn't see, excuse me, we didn't see any pictures.
Yes, sir.
Well, okay, and, uh, our, our, uh, consultant did, you know, building inspector. And, and you said that you have pictures. That's, that's his job.
You guys never gave us the pictures. You might have submitted them to the building department. We never told them prior. To your arrival and so, so just so that's clear, the council has never seen that.
Well, I have more than this on my computer. I have even more.
So, that's, is that, what do you have there?
This was in my.
Today, yeah, today.
So I think, just to recap, the last meeting we, that you attended, that we were all here for, we. Went a little outside of our parameters and allowing those to be reviewed by staff. That was the direction of council, I believe at that moment, was to have them review. To see if they're, they were gonna be sufficient. It looks like our building inspector has determined that they were not sufficient. Is that correct as what, the way I'm seeing it?
That is correct.
Yes.
Here's the pictures. If you wanna see, I can explain all of these.
But he is the professional who will, you know, who we contract with to, to make that termination. The termination he has made is. He is not willing to sign off on that because he feels in his professional opinion that this was insufficient. I just wanna make sure we're clear on that, correct? Yes.
And that is correct.
Thank you.
I have some more things to say about that if necessary, but, uh, that is.
Please, uh, say what you.
The, normally in a situation like this, um, as I said, the, the. Council doesn't have the authority to overrule the building inspector because it's a building code issue and the person has the expertise. There's supposed to be what's called a board of appeals to, uh, well, you normally would bring it to the building official if there was an issue. Um, and if the building official's opinion, uh, wasn't agreeable to the applicant, they could appeal to a board of appeals. We don't have a board of appeals. Um, they're very rare, they're very rarely used and bigger cities have them. We do have a building official though. So we could have, if the council wants, uh, like a second opinion, we could have our building official, which is J S Pacific. Take a look and speak with Mr. Goodman and kind of review Mr. Rose. And that would be something I would, I would be willing to recommend, um, rather than have you feel that you need to make the decision, um. Either Mr. Rose or Mr. Goodman. It might not be a bad idea to get a second opinion, just in case. Although I, 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 I highly, I'm just gonna say that I doubt very much that it's twenty thousand dollars. To excavate two, three by two.
Two foot by three foot, so you have to excavate all that, then you have to dispose of all that, then you have to do the re-concrete.
Well, I, 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 we would probably wanna get an estimate on that too, to bring to the, uh, well, you didn't provide it to me before the year.
Right, I agree.
So, anyway, um, that is, um, I'd be willing to recommend that we. Appeal to the building official and then report back at the, uh, well, either the next meeting or the one after, depending how long it takes, if that's something you're interested in.
But, but let's just say, for argument's sake, it costs seventeen thousand dollars total with the R scan. Why wouldn't he take the ten thousand dollar fine? It's cheaper. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying that I'm throwing that out there. What, what makes that not a better deal for?
Okay, uh, so we have another request to speak, so with.
Well, I wanna show you the pictures.
We have another request to speak. Uh, George.
I appreciate that.
Being in the middle of the circus. I, I've been part of Proctor observing on it. We have a shady department when it comes to building and everything because they can't give you the specific answers. I'm serious. I, I've got the Proctor and we don't get the street answer. We don't have sufficient staff that are knowledgeable in a building apartment. When they're there, okay? Now, if you had an opportunity to, the letter that was submitted to Jose and page four.
Excuse me, sorry. Will you take that conversation to the back?
A letter submitted, thank you, to Jose and page four on the bottom, the last paragraph, where it specifically states that. Here's the thing that bothers me as a citizen of this community. We elected you guys to do the job. You, you have the power. In fact, you, Mr. Mayor, have ultimate power in a lot of things. You do. Maybe you can circumvent it on your own if you want to. That's the power of the mayor. Look at the power the guy has in Maui. Alright, he's holding back civil government power. But the point here is, when the staff. Tell a person that applied for, of, not even a variant, a hearing to come up with a. What do you think? We don't wanna do, and they come out, now don't worry about the city council. They have no authority. Fine. If that's the case, if that, what a waste of time. If that, if I would have been the recipient of this letter, I would have said, really? You wasted my time knowing that regardless of what. The people that represent me, the city, have no authority in this. What are you doing as a council from that perspective? Don't ever, ever not question the integrity of your staff. They make mistakes. A lot of them have problems. A lot of them are biased. Right? That happened. That's part of the human element. I've seen a lot of bias in the fire department in this situation. Of all people. Do you want him to, it's cheaper to tear the, that fence down, put a wooden fence on it? Solve the problem. But then again, the message is clear. Why building Waterloo Beach? When we don't have appropriate staff to give the job to the person who's doing it with the direction necessary to do it. Without dealing with this crap. That's my personal opinion, being on the commission. Playing a commission for four years and seeing this crap in front of my eyes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I ask a question?
Please, Mr. Alvarez, can I ask you a question?
No, because basically I'm tired of you guys. I'm leaving peacefully. I'm leaving peacefully.
Well, my question to you is this. So you're okay if your neighbors don't get a permit? To put up something that requires a permit, cuz that's what you're saying with this government.
I gotta go back and forth on this, but what, um, I'm talking about this case. It's solved, it's solvable. Either knock it down or, or decide what you want, but it shouldn't have got to this point. Except that you're dealing with these people. I, I, I can't do this.
They have a good one.
They didn't without it.
Okay, we heard from, uh, various sources and heard from our legal advice. And I, I would recommend that we go with what you mentioned in terms of, um, just going the next step, having jazz, specific amount of. Go ahead, uh, wait a minute, let me, uh. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just, I was just saying that I, 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 I appreciate that because I, I wanna avoid any appearance that there's bias. And, and having, um, a second opinion, take a look at it, I think only helps us in the long run. So I, I agree with your recommendation or your decision.
And I, I do not have the power to.
So, yeah, I, just like Mr. Goodman said, uh, I looked at the report, um, and one thing that really bothered me was. That he mentioned that the wall suddenly appeared. It wasn't really a project that took a month. Or a day or ten months. It was a project that took at least almost more than half a year. So clearly, I don't know where the co-compliance was at the time. But you could see the wall from back to back, from Masatanis to the end where the church is. About that is. And the phone that I had was, of, of course, we're not knowledgeable about this. We're not knowledgeable about putting permits, we're not knowledgeable of anything. Our idea was to create something that we wanted to do. And, and that's, again, like I said, on our end, it was our fault that we were ignorant to the facts and. There might have been some permit that we needed again. Uh, we came to the professionals to see if we will need it. And they said it has to be no bigger than six feet, I believe. Um, we thought we were in the right at that point. Again, um, what bothers me is that. Knowing that you guys are professionals and that there's co-compliance and there's firefighters and no one said anything to us. So again, this wasn't a project that suddenly, it took almost a year to finish. And, and that's what bothers me the most is that all of us started working hit and hit and constantly hit. Wasting time, wasting, you know, effort. You know, I stress about this since day one. Because of this and honestly, you know, it just isn't right. But I hope that you guys, you know, and the city chancellor, you know, have a clear view of what's going on. I mean, we're only human, we all need. I mean, we're only human, we all make mistakes. But again, and it's, I think, a part of our side's faults, not just ours, but also part of the city, the world. So I just want to know if you guys understand that.
Thank you. I think, uh, uh, Mr. Alvarez mentioned that we're responsible. Our response ability goes to hiring staff that keep us legally in line with, with, with engineering. I don't make a lot of engineering. And I think we have some recommendations by our attorney. Will you, will you, uh, you want to say something? Sir, come up here and say it.
No, I follow.
Okay, thank you. Jose.
Thank you. So I actually want to clarify some things. Attorney mentioned a few times during the hearings that we didn't provide evidence and that he will not accept any more evidence because we didn't present it at the beginning. Is that correct?
Um, if I understand, you, you didn't present any evidence at the seven administrative hearings and by the time you filed an appeal and tried to present evidence, the code specifically prohibits the introduction of new evidence at an appeal. Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, I suggested to check hearing two, your recordings. We have it. We presented, we want to present evidence. We had the pictures, but we're showing right now. The hearing officer rejected that, that, that is evident. He said, no, no, I don't want to, I don't want to see this. Therefore, we didn't have any information to present because, or we didn't present anything after that because it was rejected at the beginning. They didn't want to see it. We have all these pictures. You can ask Ruben. We have everything to present. It was rejected. Therefore, we didn't.
Um, Mr., yeah, I would like to respond. The hearing officer is not a building technician, not a building inspector. His, if I remember correctly, I don't remember him rejecting that evidence. I will double check that myself, but his point was that he wanted you to file permits and plans with the building division. That's what he wanted to see. He didn't want to make a decision about whether you had the right amount of rebar in there. The fact is, we've allowed you to present the evidence now, after the conclusion of the hearings, in spite of what the code says. So it's kind of no harm, no foul, in my opinion. You're allowed to present that, those pictures now to the appropriate people, and you have done that. And unfortunately for you, the building inspector has rejected that. And as a further accommodation to you guys, you think we're so hard on you, but I've been bending over backwards trying to help you from the beginning. We, I've recommended to the city council that they ask the building official, who's a higher level person, to hear your side of the story.
And I appreciate that.
Okay.
However, what I've seen is like, we went again to square one. Because since the beginning, this is to me like, we're just wasting time. Just might as well say it, you know, knock it down and, and that's it. Because since day one, you requested it our scan or whoever requested our scan on the wall. We went through their whole hearings, everything. The only reason that we haven't complied with our scan is because it's twenty thousand dollars. I don't have twenty thousand dollars to throw just from the satisfaction. Somebody says, oh, yeah, it's done correctly. Thank you. I don't have twenty thousand dollars. And this is the only reason why we haven't complied. I'd rather, if it goes to that point, knock down the wall. It's cheaper for me to knock it down and and not spend twenty thousand dollars on it. Uh, this is the only reason why. It's not because we want to, want to, want to comply with, want to give you guys a hard time. It's just because money. That's all. And again, we have pictures also. The Patrick taking pictures of some chickens, pet chickens that I have while the construction was going on. How come he never acknowledged that? So again, we've never tried to do this in a bad way, to say, okay, well, I got away with that, we're gonna get away with this. No, we came here for permissions, like the Ruben says, we take some fault on being naive and having the knowledge of all the stuff going on. Then again, um, we did it in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's, this seems, and I don't know about our scan, and you've mentioned that, it sounds like they're just doing a portion of the, of the wall, not the whole, not the whole wall.
Correct, but they're gonna make big holes. I have the, the crew coming to the property and tell me we're gonna make, like he said, this square, we're gonna make a hole three feet here, 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 and it's gonna cost you around twenty thousand dollars.
Not, not just one area.
Not, not the twelve hundred stated here by Mr. Rose?
Well, that was for the R scan, and I didn't have, in, in, in all fairness, I did not have the cost of the excavation of the concrete. I was, Mr. Rose believed it wouldn't be that significant, but he didn't have a number, so I think it's fair to provide that to you as well uh, at the next hearing, when we'll get our own estimate and we'll, then we'll know the exact cost of what we're asking for.
At this point, it sounds like we're gonna get the second opinion, just to make sure that we're honoring that and that it's not just us saying, well, stop set. Okay, so we get the second opinion. And then at that point, depending on how that goes, we go from there, correct?
Correct. He jumps up. Come on over here, Jose, please.
Sorry, uh, if the second opinion is gonna come from who? From somebody from the city?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it somebody independent?
Well, they are independent. They're a building official who is independent under law. The decision, the building opinion, a building official cannot be overruled by the city administrator or the city council. It's, um, it's in the building code that they're the highest authority in a jurisdiction in terms of building code questions. So they outrank the building inspector. It's like their boss, okay? We have a contractor, we used to have a different building official, but we love it. We have a contractor now, J S Pacific, highly qualified, and they're the ones that are under law, that are authorized to make this determination. If you don't like it, we'll figure out if there's a way for you to appeal it, but, um, it won't be the city council, because that is not allowed under the building code.
Okay, we'll get our own independent.
Sure, you can do whatever you want.
Thank you. It's, uh.
Mayor?
Go ahead. Yes, um, either Todd or Phil. I mean, I've never gotten to see the pictures. Are these the two pictures that were submitted?
Um, I, I understand that the building department may have more pictures, uh, both of.
I, I personally would like to see the pictures.
Sure. And I, I was relying on the building inspector's opinion that he was not satisfied with the the pictures to, to make the determination that he is empowered to make under the law. So I had to rely on his opinion. And like I said, I couldn't overrule it and, and the council can't overrule it unfortunately either, uh, unfortunately.
I honestly, I'm not an engineer, as the mayor has stated. I don't feel comfortable with giving even opinions on a photo. My apologies if people don't agree with that. But, um, I would feel much more comfortable if a professional who is certified will give us a determination on whether we're being reasonable or not.
I agree.
I think that the hearing should have been saying that if there were the six win over, we'd pick that as well. We're seeing climate change on the rise. Um, we've seen earthquakes in Ohio. They hit twice, and so I do want to have a due diligence, however, like, working with our community.
Well, we have, we have a, a clinic, we have a right to build an inspector anyway, right? So the next step is to, is to do, have just such a commandment and give us, who pays for that? Um, well, the, the responsible party is to complain about how much money time it costs them. This costs us a lot and a lot of time as well. And we will be paying for that, um, because we, we will be paying for that along with everything else that we've been paying for and trying to get compliance. I think you have a direction? I do, okay.
Because, one more question. Is, Mr. Goodman, is there any more other pictures besides these?
You know, I have to come up and see what he just handed you, that, all right, because I can't have signed it. Thanks. Uh. The only other pictures are from you, uh.
There's one here that's, you have the concrete, it was opened up.
I think, I think we, we, we give direction to the city attorney.
There's this one, and then there was, there was some that you guys just.
Excuse me. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I could email it to.
I, I want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me one second. Baby, now we're back to eleven. City facility and park use being scheduled update?
We go ahead.
Yes.
Let's get into this.
Let's go.
No, I was not asleep. Um, okay, so, uh, the recommendation, there's no resolution with this because the format actually is not correct. So the format that you're looking at would be what would be like on the city website for, um, not on the master fee schedule, but in terms of just for the public to view, so that way it's more clear for them and just how the fees are set and what all goes into it. Um, I don't know, Philip, are they able to? There's no resolution, so it would just have to come back, is that correct?
Um. Uh, they, they can prove the fees tonight by motion and are, because it's not, because we're amending the master fee schedule, that will be a separate action that we'll do by resolution.
Okay.
At a future meeting. So, I mean, you can change your mind at the next meeting, but I think the goal is to come up with a decision tonight for the fees, uh, with the understanding that you can always change it later.
Um, so my recommendations for a lot of these are, uh, most of them, I didn't really change the, the fees themselves. I just changed, um, rather than doing resident versus non-resident, I changed it to during business hours and outside of business hours, because that seems to be the difficulty here, um, in terms of, um, if, if we were to encourage people to do it during business hours, it would be a lot easier on staff. Um, and then now that we have a, a staff person working on Saturday, it's still available to be rented out at that, um, during business hour price on Saturdays. Um, and then a lot of these were just not clear. Um, I think with how how different, there's a lot of different uses for a lot of our facilities, so I tried to cover as many uses as I could think of, so recreational use, nonprofit use, and then obviously just, um, private rentals. Um, I don't, most of it is kind of described in the, the report itself in terms of why I, what my reasoning was behind a lot of the changes. But again, like, most of the changes, I didn't change the actual rate. It's more of just the the, um, I'm trying to think of how to explain what I'm trying to say. Um, more of the format than it is like the actual fee changes, uh, but there were a couple fee changes in there. So, um, one of the changes was for parks. Um, I personally think that our park fee schedule before was really excessive. Um, I know that even Waller Park that has a lot of amenities, um, to be honest, a lot more amenities than we have. We're charging way less than what we were. Um, and there's a couple, even not just the parks, but even facilities that I felt were kind of high, and I think in lowering those, we actually will get more revenue because there will be more interest in wanting to rent out those, um, facilities and parks. Um, at this point, it's more just, I'm looking for recommendations. If you guys have any changes you want to make or, um, if there's anything that you want to talk about. I know the White Park is probably going to be something you guys might want to touch on um, in terms of BGC being compensated for their staff coverage. I actually I somewhat agree, just from my, me personally, with compensating them because they are staffing like all of these events, and so I think it would be right to compensate them. I don't know if you want to compensate them as much as they want. Um, but it's, it's up to you, obviously. Um, yeah, so I'll turn it to you guys.
I think with that, with that, the boys and girls, that's, they have to be, uh, they're gonna have staff there, so it's better than our staff having to, having to be there, because then that would be really getting into crosshairs, he does what to whom.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I have any problems with that. Um, the, what are the, what, you know, in terms of the nonprofit side of things, because it it seems to me that I don't have any problems with, with the standards of the actual cost.
Mm-hmm.
It would seem easier to me if nonprofits had a flat twenty percent discount across the board. Instead of, because there are a couple areas here that there was, uh, you have a, a large discount, uh, as opposed to this across the board at forty percent. I don't think we have to get into the weeds of this in terms of, people need to know the standards, and I think you've got them covered. Um, so if we could go, to me, again, uh, several of the cities use even thirty percent, uh, whatever fee is thirty percent for nonprofits. So that, that's just one of the recommendations. The other one is, and I'm having a, uh, an attachment two, when it comes to alcohol. I have, I have some concerns with, with alcohol at the parks, alcohol at any, any of our facilities. Because if you, once you start mixing alcohol, then you start, then there's, there's issues, I think, with, uh, with, uh, public safety in terms of law enforcement.
So for parks, you're actually not supposed to have alcohol at any of those parks at all?
Right.
That's the law. Um, I know it, it is hard to monitor that. Um.
Yeah.
Um, but in terms of, at least like on rentals, we tell them you're not supposed to have alcohol, whether they comply or not. Unfortunately, we just don't have the staff, parks and rec staff, or even public safety staff to make sure that every single party that is going on is not having alcohol at their events. Um, and especially because a lot of times it's not obvious. They are good at making sure that it's not obvious that they have alcohol there. Um, for facilities, uh, the only facility that I believe that we should allow alcohol is here because it's already been going on. Um, we kind of have it more. Uh, we have more policies and procedures in place to make sure that it's doing, being done safely and correctly. Um, the only other one would be eventually, hopefully, uh, Veterans Hall using the, um, the bar area, but I know there's still things going on with that. So as of right now, there wouldn't be any alcohol use there. Um, senior centered, I don't recommend, um, it's a senior center, so.
Well, there was advisory group that, uh, they, they come up again, there, there was no alcohol served, unless there was a little champagne, somebody turned a hundred and five, that you could have champagne. Uh, you know, on your assessment, on the attachment two, it talks about additional costs for all rentals if applicable, you know, alcohol permits, alcohol permits without an ABC license. Uh, so somewhere we need to look at, if it, there's no alcohol, but there's going to be alcohol. You know, a couple weeks ago at the, at the barbecue pit at, at O'Connell, you probably know that, there was, you know, about three or four cases of empty cases, model of booze. That's hard to control on, on a, on a weekend. But my concern is that with alcohol on our sites, and I think you're right, this site, uh, having control, the American Legion, uh, not the American Legion, but the Veterans Hall with, if it's, as we move forward, then there's gonna be bar, then there's ABC, uh, one day permit type thing. So I think that'll come under, that'll be, we'll be able to control that.
Yeah. Um, and then in terms of what you're talking about for nonprofit, I'm completely fine with whatever direction you guys want to go in. I was just more trying to I think what happens a lot is we say during these meetings, and I'm just being completely frank, we say during these meetings that we're not going to waive fees or that we're not going to reduce fees for nonprofits, but then what ends up happening is somebody knows somebody and they say, oh, well, this is an event for the community, or this is for whatever, and it might be, and it might be a great cause, but at the same time, every time that we do that, we're losing money. So I would rather do it at a lower fee where we know that we're that that nonprofit is going to be okay with that fee and pay that fee, then give them a twenty percent discount and then right away they're coming to council asking to waive that fee or to reduce that fee. So if you guys are going to make sure that we're not doing that, then I'm okay with doing twenty percent.
I think for me, the historical issue with what you're talking about was this was never documented. We never had clear parameters, like, okay, this is gonna be our agreement for nonprofits. I think moving forward, if we have a document that says this is what qualifies for this, I think that's easier to uphold versus having, well, so and so got to have a waiver. Why don't I get to have a waiver? Well, you know, then you get into the weeds about what those events were and what the differences are. So I think we just need to be really clear in our language about what constitutes a nonprofit, what type of event, like if it's free to the community, is it a fundraiser? Are they gonna have alcohol? You know, it can't be just oh, I'm gonna give all nonprofit a twenty percent discount. Um, but one's an art gala where nobody's gonna be charged and it's only, there's no food, no kitchen use, but then another one is a, um, reverse drawing with alcohol and ticket sales and, you know, two hundred people. Those are two very different nonprofit events, and so I do think we do need to have some language spelled out with what's gonna constitute what discount and who meets that criteria personally.
I would like to second on that, just because I've done people like that. I'm no longer a host, but I was, um, was a host for eight years, and so I've worked with a lot of city admin. And so I worked with a lot of city administrators, but it was kind of like we had this understanding that I'm providing a service, uh, we just have to. These, um, but now looking at these fees, it seems like if people liked it would like to host, it would be five hundred and seventy dollars, five hundred and seventy dollars for the day. Um, cause it would be the one eighty for the first four hours, plus every four hours additional would be the, um.
But I mean, it still would be more than that, honestly, if it was for Viva Alarte and you did a twenty percent discount, it would probably be more than that. So that's why I'm saying like. That's where the difficulty is, and the other difficulty is that all these are five oh one C threes. So every single one that we waived or reduced fees on, they do have proof that they're a nonprofit. Cause there's a huge list of nonprofits here in Guadalupe, so, mm-hmm. So I'm not sure what direction you guys wanna go in, in terms of that.
Um, um, that totally off, not totally off topic, but one thing you could put in there, it seems like there's a temperature to say if there's a funeral at the vet's hall, they. Veterans, that's completely.
They have it anyway, if you're a veteran.
Yeah, I mean. Should that be memorialized, or is it just, I mean, stated within the document?
Oh.
Well, that, that veterans are, veterans.
They they can use it for free regardless, because that's just.
It's just federal's law, okay.
For the veterans memorial, only, right?
Yeah.
And then, uh, are we?
Go ahead.
Okay, I had a couple questions, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
No, we already took that one on topic, um, what about, I didn't see in here, setup, setup fees, like I know we've had events where people wanna come in the night before. They wanna come in, you know, early that morning, it's six AM setup, are we gonna include any language for that, or is that gonna be? A determination of staff to say, yes, we can, cause that's a hardship for staff too, and then we, if you're having an event on Saturday, but you wanna come in on Friday. From seven to nine to set up, is there gonna be a fee assessed for that, or are we just gonna leave that?
So that's why I kinda was going in the business hours versus non-business hours, right? To more encourage them to do their setups during business hours, and then it would be an additional cost outside of business hours.
Okay, and then, I'm a little confused on one area in terms of the barbecue area at Leroy Park, I saw some language. One saying we're not renting it, but then I noticed we do rent it, so are we?
So we don't rent, um, the community center, but we rent the barbecue area.
Okay, yeah, cause I.
But I, um.
There was language saying that we didn't wanna rent out.
For recreation.
The outdoor area.
So it's more like the grass area for recreational use, um, and that's. Yes.
And can you, um, so for the grass area, that would mean like no soccer, um, no soccer, but, so I know that we gotta grant. Money from the state of that, is there any perimeter you can get state running that you can like not allow certain things just carry it?
I have an answer for you.
I can.
I think what, are you talking about Leroy?
Yeah.
Cause, cause I think what happens is that that grass area was too premature for that group to be using it. And basically tore tore it up, so I think they have reason here to redo that, fence it off and get that up to snow. That I.
I mean, we.
You can't have a legal, I mean, you can't have a, a teen soccer there, it's just not.
It's the front yard, they're walking.
Yeah, that's right, and then throwing Chris there or stuff like that, so.
I know, just because the Boys and Girls Club goes out there and they play soccer all the time on there, they go, they poke up.
Yeah, that's.
But that's more, I think, and I can make it more clear in the write-up that I did, but it's more of the. The adults, honestly, because they come in with their cleats, and then that's what ruins the the grass.
Yeah.
Um, and they've been going to the back area now, cause they're hiding, but, um. That's, I think it's just gonna ruin the grass regardless, I don't think it's like a, whether, it was premature because it was so new.
Right.
Um, but even outside of that now, like if they, if they keep using that back area, it's gonna become like the front area as well.
I think it's hard just because we go in park right now, it's a funny area for them to play, I don't think they're allowed to be school, um, to school. And then Leroy, our Jack O'Connell now has a football field, and then there's like several different.
There's plenty of.
There's a lot of space out there that.
Actually use baseball field for soccer, as long as they move it around, you don't sit there and clean up the whole area.
And I think that's the difference, you know, like when the Boys and Girls Club have their students, they're their kids there, if they're not wearing cleats.
Mm-hmm.
So they're playing in tennis shoes, they're playing in horseshoes.
And I think they have, they have priority.
Yeah. But I, I think there's nothing wrong with saying no cleat on the film, like even if, let's say, even if they were doing it, I would think if you not have cleats. And I think that's reasonable, because it is gonna tear up that grass. I know kids that can play with sandals, they don't care, I I. Uh, so yeah, I I think those are my main questions, and just some things that I had, um, was the setup fee for events. The usage of barbecue pit, Leroy Park, that was a little pair, but thing of everything, and then, um. Just being really aware of that, not, I do think that nonprofit is a silverware, so, that's a tough one to tackle, so. Um, hopefully we can get some language that really clarifies what we're gonna allow to get what discount.
Well, there is, there's a cost to providing that.
Yeah.
And I know that there's, you don't charge the, the, there's one charge for that.
I don't recall what the fee was for the Boys and Girls Club, I was just curious how this would, oh, I guess, what if somebody only rented it for one hour? Um, would we be eating that charge?
Um.
That's theirs, that's.
Oh, so they. Okay, so we, we told him the matter. For the Leroy Park one.
Well, there's a reason we have with Boys and Girls Club for use of that building, so.
Right, but if we, are you talking about any events outside of the usage of Boys and Girls, right, yeah.
I'm just, it's more of a philosophical, uh, question regarding, say, a group, say, the school wanna use it for volleyball five days a week. Um, that plays into, they would have some outside special, they've requested an outside special agreement. So I know that, um, Dr. Handel has asked us, um, to, um, use the facility for a hundred days, fifty dollars a day. And I just wonder what your thoughts are about that, how that could impede the auditorium or not. And I I'm sorry if I'm throwing that out, there might be too much.
Let me, let me go back to her question before we do that, um. Let me say that again, I'm so sorry, I lost my train of thought.
It might not even matter, but I I see these numbers, but these don't matter, so I'm adding so I'm correct, because they're the Boys and Girls Club, because they're the ones that are gonna oversee these.
So they, um, at least from what I talked to Roberto about, they're just wanting at least the forty dollars per hour. For their staff compensation, but we would get whatever is the remainder of that, yeah.
So I guess my question would be, say, oh, say that somebody just wanted to do one hour, I had a business meeting, one hour, and then. It was a a lock-in day rate, and so it's thirty-five dollars, but, um, does the Boys and Girls Club want us to pay forty, and who would eat the?
Our dog.
Yeah.
So you're talking about using Leroy Park for one day, one hour, or?
Well, like a, like a meeting or.
So they, that was the fee for the, um, the arts and crafts room, the, um, and then the stage area. They're fine with doing the fifteen dollars an hour, as long as it's during, uh, business hours. And then that's why I said outside of business hours, because then that would compensate for their downtime.
Yeah, that's strange. And so if anything above would be on that, we would take, so like, let's say.
I'm saying like if, if, um, it's less than forty dollars, that's someone that have to pay. If somebody rents for something and it's less than forty dollars.
Ah, I'm raising, are we paying that bill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is it, after hours?
We'll just say to them, it, it was thirty-five dollars, looking at this rate, somebody just paid thirty-five dollars, and Boys and Girls Club is, uh, charging forty dollars. We have to, where's that five dollars coming from?
So I think the difference is, is because you're, you're quoting a number that's within business hours, that forty dollars would not come in, like, correct?
Yeah, because they said that they're okay with doing a fifteen dollar, fifteen dollar an hour rate for during business hours, yes.
Oh, okay.
So it could be forty.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
With our fees, though, we're asking, where's that going?
Uh, everything, um.
I mean, we are, we're providing a, a city employee, they're being compensated for their hours. To be here to attend, or are we asking, like my question that we've been answered years past, handing people keys?
No, I, I don't agree with handing people keys at all, uh, the only people that I think have keys that. I am okay with, but kind of what Todd was touching on is the school district, um, but outside of that. I think that moving forward, it shouldn't be. And a lot of nonprofits would do this, where they'd say, well, in the past, we didn't have to pay the building attendant fee. Because we just were the ones staffing it, but I think what happens to the end, and I've run into this, where I've gotten a phone call saying. Hey, we need you to come to City Hall because X, Y, and Z happened, and there's no building attendant, because they said that in the past, they've just done it themselves. So I think we need to provide a building attendant regardless, so there would be a building attendant there to, um, do the bathrooms. Uh, take out the trash, but they, whoever the renter is, is supposed to be responsible for returning the. The facility back to its original status.
So, come back, now comes to my second question. The deposits that are showing on here. For two fifty, hundred twenty-five refundable, the senior center, and any of the, those are, any deposits?
That covers the equipment, because we allow them to use all of the city, uh, janitorial, uh, equipment. Oh, yeah, electric, um. Yeah, kitchen.
Wrong too.
Uh, water and sewer. But that's why in this, I didn't put cleaning deposit on the new one, it's just deposit in general, because I don't. What they don't realize is that there's a lot of other costs that are involved outside of just cleaning. Um, there's staff time that it takes to meet with them, to coordinate the rental, um, there's setting up. Time with whoever the building attendant is, there's just a lot of fees outside of that, and if you want like a full breakdown of all the costs. I can definitely get that for you, um, but that's why I changed it to not just cleaning deposit, but just deposit in general. Because if you go to any other facility, they charge a lot more for their deposits than than what we're charging. Um, and they have a lot more staff to be able to, to provide more services than what we do, but, um. I don't know, did that answer your question, or?
I was asking because I know in the past.
The past.
People were all, this recently, we're redoing the fees, looking at it to kind of change them a little bit, but. They're being charged for the deposit, only getting half, and they're being told that, oh, because they gotta bring in a cleaning crew to come clean it when they just already cleaned it, that's why I'm asking. Cause I've had residents ask before, like, why is it that we're only getting half when we cleaned it a lot better than what it was when we got into there and got it?
That is debatable, depending on, on the groups, um.
You know, I've seen it firsthand when I went in there after, uh, someone used it, and another person was gonna use it. And setting up tables and all, and it was, the floor was sticky and dirty, so it's been, you know, I've seen it firsthand.
Mm-hmm.
Then I was just recently this year, but it's just one of those, that's why I'm asking, like, you know, people ask, and it's like, you know. So if that's gonna be with everything that that be is, you know, so then, okay, I think we should lay that out, that this is what the deposit. Is covering, like, discovering, you're meaning to set up with the facility person that you're meaning to meet with the tenant when you're setting up and. Everything like that, I think we should just kind of have it, you know, this is why, when you're done, you get half, cause this other half helps pay for all this footwork and stuff. Okay.
The other thing too with that, there is no one, maybe, maybe a very few, um, that individually use it. That know how to clean, um, and I see that all the time, almost all the time, passion.
May I suggest that part of the contract agreement that they are required, checklist, is that when they first arrive, they take pictures? And if they don't take pictures, then they don't have proof.
Yeah, there's, there's normally a walkthrough.
And there is, um, I personally have been the building attendant for a lot of events, and I make sure when they first get there. I walk them through every single, every, the bathrooms, the kitchen, I look at everything, um. I just was training Robert and showing him the checklist that I do, um, so I go through that checklist, and whoever the building attendant is, usually if it's not me. Um, it's Juan, and he's really good about it too, we check everything and write down everything that is already an issue. That's already something that's broken, or something that needs to get fixed, so that way, at the end of it, we know for sure, okay, this is new. This did not happen before, um, so that happens a lot, and then even just in terms of cleaning, I think. I think what ends up happening is by the time they get to the end of the night, they think that they're gonna be able to clean up within an hour, and you can't. And, um.
Especially for long events.
Mm-hmm, and then they, it's, I don't wanna say like laziness, cause I understand more than anybody that at the end of an event, you're tired. And you wanna go home, um, but at the same time, I think the, the standard in their mind is, oh, well, as long as we take the trash out. Then that's fine, as long as there's not like a big puddle on the ground, then that's fine, but what they're not thinking about is the next day, we have volleyball coming in. And it has to be way more clean than that, to make sure that it's safe for the players that are gonna be playing on the court. Um, so I think there's just, it's not even a, a miscommunication, because we tell them, it needs to be exactly how it was. When you first came in here.
That's the thing, if there's, if there's no trash in the trash cans. And they, they sign off that there's, and if we're, they're required to just take the trash out, and we have a, um, to prep it. For, uh, you know, for next event, so.
Um, would it be, be, uh, possible for us to provide more maybe brooms, um, it is very hard to clean this hall, um. And sometimes when I have a, a community band, it's only like two brooms, it's, it's a little hard. Um, so just looking at the materials that we have, because that would make it so much easier, I love to clean, um, so just boosting up that, um, the.
I thought about it.
Get a, get a group, so you get more people at it, so.
Correct, when I have a community event, there's only two brooms, and if I had, I don't know, a broom that was more bigger.
That was my point, though, a lot of people don't know how to use a broom.
Yeah.
Especially the modern day.
So, what do you need from us?
One last thing, sorry, uh, just something to, to tidy up when we're redoing this, the reservation lock-in date.
Mm-hmm.
Was that refundable or non-refundable, I know we had talked about this before, like, if they end up holding their event, we're gonna apply that to the cost of the event. Or are we just saying, this is your lock-in date, and then you're paying that lock-in fee, and it doesn't count towards your actual bill?
So I put that in the, um, in the intro page, I put, uh, this deposit is made to lock in a date for a rental, if the event does not take place. This amount will be deducted from the cost of the deposit, the reservation lock-in date still applies to nonprofit organizations.
Alright, and that's, this is untouched, okay, nevermind, I'm getting the flow of information, I just was concerned that it wasn't actually on the. The fee, but I get what you're saying, because of the.
Cause it applies to all the facilities.
Awesome, thank you for clarifying.
One more point on your checklist, do you have the individuals that are renting sign?
Yes, so there's a internal checklist that is more for whoever the building attendant is, and more for city. Knowledge if they wanna question.
Right.
Well, this, this was, uh, we didn't break it, like, it was you guys, we'll know on this checklist, we have that it was already, um. Or it wasn't broken before, but there's another checklist that is, they're supposed to sign at the very beginning, and the building attendant goes through it with them. And outlines all the things of what the expectations are of how it needs to be returned, so they sign it at the beginning. So that's part of the reason why, when later, if we don't refund that, we explain to them, you sign this acknowledging that. This is how you needed to return it, and that's not how it was returned.
One more question. Um. Have we still been looking at like tables and chairs, to replace what we've had, but. Why is that can be utilized instead of then rented, and using everything here?
Um, so we have, it's just difficult because the, we only have the, I think it's like eight thousand. What is it, like eight thousand nine hundred or something for ARPA to fund that, and even though that sounds like a big number, it's really not. In terms of having that amount of tables and chairs that we need, um, the cheapest option that we found is through Costco. But the only issue is that we don't have a credit card that we can make that big of a purchase on, um, and I don't believe that Costco has. Um, the ability to, uh, have us do invoices like how we usually do for bigger costs. Um, so we're still trying to figure out the logistics of that, but we are, we do have quotes for tables and chairs, we're just trying to figure out how to.
Maybe they could use mine and that could get reimbursed.
You have eight, I hope it's always spot?
Not really.
The ones that we ordered for the school.
Mm-hmm.
There's some nights when they came with the rack and all, I'll see if we can find out how much.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cause it's really good, I mean, chair-wise, we look different, but they really, we'll.
We have the C train, so we can get rid of all those chairs and.
I have a second question, my apologies, um, I know that the Sanrio Parks and Rec donated a small. Um, I know that the Sanrio Parks and Rec donated a small, uh, stage rental, would that ever be, um, use that rental?
Um.
Where is that?
If you would like us to, it's at the, the yard right now, um. We can, it's just such a small stage, I don't know what kind of fee would want to charge for that.
I feel like stages are so much needed and so if you can make us revenue, uh, any income.
How big is it?
Uh, gosh.
That was a Leroy Park.
There, yeah, I don't.
You put, but you can put the trap drums on or that's about it.
So what did you need from her?
Um, just if there's any changes for like the actual fees themselves, um, and then outside of that, I'll. Uh. If you want, would you like me to bring this specific document back with those changes in addition to the, the master fee schedule? Cause, uh, basically what Phil and I were trying to explain is that the layout is gonna be different. So the resolution would be for the master fee schedule to fit that format where this is more just for the public to view. But, um, if there's changes to the fees, I would like to know that now, so that way when I present the. The master fee schedule and the resolution, I can have the correct fees on there.
I'm comfortable with what you've got now, except, not except of using this, you know, a. A lot of discount of a certain amount, so it sounds like you're close to it anyway.
So you, would you rather have just like a twenty percent?
That was what I thought.
Okay.
Make it a plus four, then they'll know what it is. Any more questions, Anna?
Um, I did wanna bring back what Todd was talking about though, um. Uh, I know at the Wreck and Park Commission meeting that we just had. They really want us to have, uh, an agreement, which, um, being completely candid. Dr. Handel would like to keep things status quo, meaning not to have a written agreement. Um, I'm just concerned about, about liability, but then also just in terms of like, who's doing what. There's, I don't want there to be any miscommunication and then them be able to say, well, you guys were supposed to be in charge of that. And then us not have any type of written document to show, okay, no, you were supposed to do that.
I'm against not having a written document.
I, I spoke to him, I, I talked about an MOU, you should, don't have to do a, do a joint powers because they don't know what's gonna happen with the school.
Right.
But an MOU regarding the auditorium, which is the primaries.
Would you call?
Primary, we have to have, we have to have a doctor. Yeah, an agreement, then we're gonna do this, you're gonna get this.
Um, so in terms of that, if he. Still says no, am I able to tell him that they are not allowed to use?
Yeah, like a, like a letter agreement or something? Does it have to be called?
It's, it's just a name.
Yeah.
Call it what you want, some sort of.
Letter agreement of some sort, yeah.
I, I would think it needs to be structured, it, it need, we need clarity, because, I mean, let's say that district changes hands, you're leaving. I don't wanna hear, well, they told me I could. I want it in writing, I want it spelled out. Yeah, something that's in writing.
Okay.
That shows those parameters of agreement.
Going forward. Yeah, yeah, I think going forward, we are seeing that we don't have anything written, so going forward, I think we want something clear and nice.
And I would say that it is required in order to move forward with usage.
Okay, something, I think I have my direction.
Okay, we have, uh, thank you. I had a twelve community benefit agreement, they say, well, there's an element seven LLC, is that what they changed to?
Yeah, Element Seven LLC is what they changed it to, yeah, originally it was, um. An acronym of BNC something or other, I can't remember what it was, but yeah, so we had to go through a. Make sure that their board was the same as this new name, so, and they checked out, so. It's, um, also happened with one fifty-one Abyssal, and then they changed their name to Central Coast Processing as well, so that.
Okay, just, as a prelude to discussion that there's a request by Mr. Alvarez to. Uh, table this until they have an individual here.
Yeah, I got, I, I also got an email from, uh, Moreno and I talked to, Josh Black is two of the members, um, Josh was the one we negotiated with. Um, Moreno sent, he, he wanted a table too, because nobody could be here, but at the same time, after I talked to me, I said, I, I feel like. Um, what you presented in the application and also what you presented to the city council at the time sort of mirrors what's in here. So I indicated to them that, um, you know, obviously you'd have to vote on this tonight, but. In my mind, an estimation, I said, I think they might highly consider, um, what's here after I give you the presentation. If by chance you feel like it should come back, you could always take it back and, um.
My, my feeling is that, oh, we got ding before for not doing this, not doing that, and then coming back and.
Yeah.
My, my feeling with that, somebody here, so you're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, they were offered to, to be a part of this process, but, you know.
But we're looking at time, because we have another one coming up.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, there's another one that I'm working on right now that I was planning to put to the, uh, first meeting in September. And, um, I could probably put this one on and then that one on the second meeting in September. Um, kinda wanna keep them separate. Um, we have sort of a, sort of a timeline where we have, we have to prove these community benefit agreements in September. Um, so there's, there's, there's some timing on this, um, all three have submitted their conditional use permits. Um, two of them have, you know, come back and have been approved by the city council, including Element Seven. The Slow Roots, one is, they submitted their, um, CUP on, on June first, application on June first. And, um, there's, they're working on that right now, so, um, we should have time, we have time on, on that as well, we're moving along.
Phil, what are your thoughts on? I'm, I'm in favor of tabling it because of the request from the African, and in fact, in case you decide to make a change and they're not here. That would be worse, um, so. Uh, sure. Or continue to the next meeting, okay? All, any discussion?
I have a quick question for discussion, so if they don't show up to the next meeting, then we, we would move forward, right? Just making sure, it sounds like there's a timer.
Just clarify that, um, their, their, the code required them to complete this. Six months after the effective of the ordinance, because they were already approved for that, which means September thirtieth, but. There's, uh, there's flexibility if the, if there's good cause to continue it, so it's not like they're gonna lose the right. Uh, and then the, uh, two of them have already gotten their CUPs, uh, the last one, Slow Cal Roots, one has until December thirty-first. Uh, although that could be extended if the delay is on the part of the city, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, there's a motion on the board, are those a favor of the motions, say aye? Those opposed, all ayes. Um, I, I think we can take the sidewalk vending ordinance off now, because it's gonna be brought back with the boot truck, right? Are we good with the future developments?
Oh, uh, the tree ordinance actually might make appearance. Somewhere, huh?
September twenty-second, tentatively, get it off the end schedule, that way we'll have a little pressure to move forward on that.
Yes, it's.
I'm sorry, it, it says twenty-sixth on here, you know, it could be.
You said twenty-second.
Oh, sorry.
Getting late.
I, I also had very little sleep last night, unfortunately, so I'm a real slap happy.
Let everybody know that, uh, Kiwanis is doing a day of vote, uh, with the newspaper tomorrow. Um, there will be in front of the post office and at the intersection of Highway one and one sixty-six by the cemetery. And then on Thursday, the twenty-fourth. Uh, McKenzie Junior High will be doing, uh. Barbecue fundraiser, attractive sandwiches, I believe they're ten dollars, but the attractive, uh, sandwich shipped in.
Sure, um. Weatherman Bulldogs will be playing, um, this Saturday at the Pomona Regional Park. Uh, versus the four Nepomeo Cowboy teams, games starting at nine for the Vannons, eleven for the Juniors. Intermediates at one and the senior team at three o'clock. So if you have, um, wanna come and support the team, they'll be at, at the Pomona Regional Park. They're gunning for you, buddy. I said they're gunning for. Is that it? Have a few items, uh, one is, uh, SBK. Uh, Caltrans, again, I, I mentioned it with, uh, they, they walk through the, their facilities, area. APCD has, um, seventy percent discount on support for electric, uh. Windrackers, lowers, tractors. So if anybody else, it's nonprofits, any business that wants to turn in a tractor, turn in a, a blower, turn in anything that's gas powered. Does that, January one, twenty twenty-four, you will not be able to buy a gas-powered tool in, in California. Better get to, uh, electric. And.
You okay?
I just wanna share that the Empty Bowls is having a fundraiser October eighteenth, I know that the mayor, the head, the, uh, the food bank. They come a month a month, so Empty Bowls tickets are available if anybody would like to make a purchase, there's two seating, then it's a go.
Empty bowls.
Fundresser for what?
Empty bowl.
Is there most new during the closed session?
Almost it's during the closed session.
I have a second.
Any discussion, I'll let David Norton say aye.